I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will start with our invocation. Mr. Administrator, when you're prepared, would you please proceed?
Pray with me, folks. Father, we're grateful for the beauty of this morning. We're grateful for groups like the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts that do wonderful things for our community. We're also grateful, Father, and thankful for those that serve and protect locally. We're very thankful for those that served to protect here and abroad and those that came home. And we are thankful, Father, for those that served to protect here and abroad and didn't come home. We are very, very grateful. We ask all this in Jesus' blessed name. Amen.
Amen. We will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Jacob Taylor from Troop 180. If you would all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Melty?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
That brings us to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion related to the approval of our agenda for today?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or any other amendments to our agenda? Seeing none, is there any discussion on our approval of the agenda?
No, thank you.
Seeing done, Commissioner Thompson, you are free to close.
I'll close.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to meeting schedules. Mr. Administrator?
The next scheduled commission meeting will be a business session that will take place on Wednesday evening, June the 9th, beginning at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you very much. That brings us to honorary resolutions, and we have two this morning. They are, well, Mr. Administrator, if you'd like to give us a little bit of a description on that, then we will go to our guests here today.
Of course, the honorary resolutions are for two troops, Troop 180, Scout Troop 180 and Scout Troop 320, who did some wonderful work in the recent months preparing PPE for distribution, very, very hard, very complex, and they did a magnificent job at that.
Thank you very much. Oh, and by the way, I want to thank Jacob for doing the Pledge of Allegiance. You did a very good job. Thank you. We've got the resolutions that are coming forward. This is something that kind of strikes close to home to me, and also Commissioner Carpenter, we are both members of Troop 180 in the past. Some of us, it's been further in the past than others.[356.03][356.03](Laughter). But at this time, if some of the representatives would like to come up and give us a little bit more of an explanation on the project and the accomplishments of these two fine
Hi there. My name's Dan Reese. I'm with the Clay County Emergency Management. I'm a specialist. I also happen to be a Mayor Bash Counselor for Emergency Preparedness, Mayor Bash in Troop 320, with my son there. So how this all came about is listening to some of the COVID-19 Task Force meetings throughout the region. We were approached by the Task Force on Early Child Care and Educational Providers, and they were asking for support because they had a bunch of PPE, masks, thermometers, hand sanitizers, and a lot of PPE that was available from Heart to Heart International and the Ford Motor Company. The problem was, the warehouse was in another county where they had all this. And when I asked, why, how hard is it to get it distributed? They said that our daycare centers, our early childcare educational providers, started early in the morning and ended late at night, and they were short-staffed. So they're unable to go to the warehouse to pick it up to bring it back because of the times they were working. So they asked the Public Health Department if they could help out, and the Public Health Department was very busy at that time. This is last fall, around November, so. So at that point, I thought, hmm, from emergency management perspective, we'll sync up, synchronize with other partners to find out what they can do. And across the table was sitting my son, which was within arm's reach of this, and checking with the troop leaders of 320. I said, is this the type of mission that we would want to do as a scout trip? And the answer is a resounding yes. So we synchronized with the, with our early childcare providers, drew up maps, and had pallets of material delivered to the public health warehouse, which is in North Kansas City there. And then the troops showed up on a Saturday morning and rearranged all the, disassembled the pallets and put them in, little groupings for each of the daycare centers, and contacted daycare centers and delivered them, either to their work of business and some places, even their homes. So they drove all around the county with their parents, delivering these supplies that these daycare centers couldn't even get on the market because it was just unavailable. And they were doing this to protect their children. So our troop did two of these iterations, and then the 180th, under Becky Moberg's leadership here, was able to pick up that mission and continue to do that. And then here, up this upcoming Monday night, will be the last distribution mission because the demand signal has dropped off, the supplies are now readily available, and a lot of these daycare centers are able to do it. So I will tell you right now that one of the first mission sets that went out, when one of the scout parents had talked to me, when they delivered the PPE, it was met with tears. Because some of these daycare centers were using their own money to buy these, this PPE and cleaning supplies to keep their children safe. So it was, as he put it, this was one of the best missions he's ever done in his life throughout scouting. And I think it speaks a lot to the scouts of the 180th, the parents as well, to devote the time and effort to take off the days and the hours to go deliver the materials and the time for the scouts to sort it out in their leadership. And I'll tell you right now, if it wasn't for Troop 320 and 180, this mission would never have occurred. So you folks and the parents, very proud to be part of this county. I'm very proud to have my, be part of Troop 320, very proud to be part of Clay County Emergency Management to help synchronize this stuff, and I'm really proud to be a resident of Clay County. Becky, do you have any words to add?
Just Becky Moberg, and I'm the Advancement Chair for Troop 180. And my husband and I both are in healthcare, he at Children's Mercy and myself at KU. So this pandemic has hit us on all fronts, at work, at home. And so it was really meaningful for us to have the opportunity to distribute PPE when we knew it was so greatly needed by these early childhood education programs. And I couldn't be prouder of our boys that showed up, lots of boys that showed up for these sorting endeavors. I think it was really good life experience for them. It was, you know, we've got pallets of just hundreds of boxes of gloves and hand sanitizer and masks and thermometers and all of the things that these childhood centers needed. And we let the boys do it. It was a list of who needed what, how many they requested, what do we have to allocate, and they did the work. These guys did the heavy lifting of sorting, making sure we had everything adequately labeled, and then organizing who was going to take what where. And I think in our last mission, we had 20 centers that we had to deliver to. So huge kudos to our boys for doing the heavy lifting, and of course, the parents behind them for providing the transportation. And we were everywhere, from down by Vivian and Inglewood, Clearup to Excelsior Springs to deliver these items. And the gratitude, like Dan had said, was just tremendous from these childhood centers. So it's been a great experience, super proud of Troop 320, Troop 180. And I would just echo what Dan said, just the spirit of community in Clay County is tremendous. I love living here and proud to do this work. Thanks for having us today.
Thank you. Commissioner Carpenter, did you have any comments or questions?
Well, I just want to say, I'm very proud of you all as well, and thank you for your hard work. You've earned this celebration today of your, of your good work. As Commissioner Melty mentioned, I was a member of Troop 180 back when I was a kid, and it was an amazing experience. And I, you know, and to both Troops 320 and 180, I should be very proud of your work. You know, when your community needed you, when your country frankly needed you in a moment of crisis, you all stepped up and, and served, I think, in the best spirit of the Boy Scouts. And you should be very proud of that. You should be proud of that for the rest of your lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson?
I will say, I absolutely love seeing that these two troops stepped up in the time when our community really needed you. You guys did great work. You helped a lot of children. Your parents did a great job of supporting you guys through this effort, and I don't know, you guys did a terrific job. I don't know what more we can say, and I'm very proud of you. I think I speak for the whole commission here that you guys did wonderful. So thank you so much for doing that, and I think that is basically the essence of Boy Scouts, and I think you fulfilled it. So you should be very proud of yourselves. Thanks for coming in today.
I just want to say that been involved in scouting pretty much when I was a scout and also as a scout leader. I'm not sure if I was a leader at the time that you were in the troop, but that just sort of underscores the, my advanced age. But I think this demonstrates something that is a broader picture, and that is the value of the scouting organization. I think that it is an organization that really instills the ethic of serving your community, helping those, in this case, not necessarily helping someone smaller or weaker than yourself, but certainly being of service to this community. It's just one of those things that it's, I'm glad we're putting a spotlight on it, but in all honesty, this is not unusual for the scouts. The scouts do any number of these kinds of projects, and they go unreported, unnoticed. But I think that were you not here, were you not doing this work, your presence would be sorely missed, and we are extremely happy to have you here and happy to have you here in Clay County. Another thing that I want to mention is that, by the way, as you young men start getting of age, in Troop 180, there is a scholarship program. And this is the kind of a thing that I think looks pretty nice on, on one of those scholarship applications. So as someone who's had multiple kids in college at the same time, I think your parents might be very interested in getting a little help for your education, because I know that you young men show the initiative necessary to be successful in life, and certainly an education will get you further in that. The last thing I do, I want to do is point out the involvement of our employees, obviously in this case, but our employees are active in the community, and I don't want to let that go by also unnoticed, that not only is the staff and employees of this county working in a dedicated manner for the people of this county, but they are active in the community, they are out there making a difference in this, in this county, and we certainly appreciate that and encourage our employees to take a hand in, in these kinds of worthy projects. So we're, we're just, it's a great day all the way around for Clay County. With that, if there's anything else, what we'll do is we will go ahead. We've got some certificates, so we will stand down for a moment, and then we will try to get pictures, whether we go each troop individually or however you want to work it. But we'll go ahead and present those, those certificates, and what they are is honorary resolutions that we have put together, that we have all three signed, and certainly we want to make sure that, that we give you a lasting commemoration of what it is that, that we are recognizing in the fine work you've done. With that, we'll go ahead and break for a moment and get some photographs, and then we will continue with our meeting. By the way, I would remind everybody that we do live stream, and these meetings are archived, so if the scouts would like to kind of take a look at it and, you know, review it, that would be certainly available. All right, so going back to our agenda, that brings us to discussion items. There aren't listed, public hearings, there are no public hearings listed. We do not have a consent agenda today. That brings us to our regular agenda. Mr. Administrator, first up is 2021-139. Please proceed.
Commissioners, 2021-139 is to approve revised contracts for the collection of taxes for cities throughout Clay County. This is at the request of the Collector. This is an annual event, and the contracts today that you're examining are the city of Smithville and the city of Pleasant Valley. I don't know if there's anybody here from the Collector, because it wasn't really, doesn't demand any further explanation. So I'm right, okay. So that's the, this is simply... Oh, I'm sorry. Barbara, forgive me. Right ahead.
That's quite all right.
Please proceed.
I'm Barbara O'Reilly with the Clay County Collector's Office. Commissioners, we are presenting the, today, the two city contracts for the city. They have been approved by their council, and we are anticipating receiving the remainder after these are signed and published. We would approve, like approval of these by the commission. And City Administrator, if there's any questions, Lydia will be back in the office on Monday, and she is live streaming this at the present time. And any questions, please present them, and she will get back the first of the week with questions. Your questions?
Are these, and this might be a better question for council, so whichever wants to take this, is this contract essentially identical to the one that we have been engaged in before?
That's right.
Very good.
That is correct.
Thank you. Something that I'm, you know, obviously, when we're doing, are making our decisions on whether an item should be on consent or on regular agenda for the following meeting, it's, it's pretty much a given that anything that requires expenditure of funding goes to, to regular agenda. Obviously, that is taxpayer money going out the door. I'm a little less certain on a contract like this, because it's required, this is money coming in and it is identical, although my gut feeling is that perhaps we're better having this go onto regular agenda just for that purpose. I could be, you know, I'm certainly open to other points of view on that, but that's just my initial take. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any, any thoughts you'd like to express?
Thank you, Commissioner. I actually spoke with the Collector earlier this week, and she said she would be back next week for the meeting, and she was comfortable if we put this on regular. And then if we come up with any questions, in the meantime, I asked a few things of her and just make sure that it was identical, you know, any, has there been any, you know, negative outreach back from these cities? And she said everything seemed fine, but I would feel comfortable...
Go ahead and speak. I could see some people kind of leaning forward.
Sorry. I feel comfortable with this going on regular, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Carpenter?
Oh, I agree. I think we'll be able to approve these contracts without any problem. But that being said, keeping the option open for amendment, I think, makes sense. So regular sounds good to me.
Are there any comments from the public on this issue? Any additional comments?
No, thank you.
With that, it is the consensus of the commission that this be put on regular agenda for our next meeting. That brings us to, thank you very much, by the way. That brings us to 2021-140. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-140 is to approve an application to participate in the Law Enforcement Support Office Surplus Property Program, which is sponsored by the Department of Defense and the Missouri Department of Public Safety. This is a request from the Sheriff's Office, and I tried to do a better job of looking around, and I don't believe there's anybody here from the Sheriff's Office to speak to that.
Okay. Once again, we're talking about a contract, and I'm more comfortable myself going on regular. Commissioner Carpenter, do you have any thoughts you'd like to express?
My question is, would just be, and whoever has the answer to this, I assume this is just continuing to participate in the program, right?
It is that. The Department of Defense has a program where they distribute surplus military-style vehicles throughout the cities and counties, and this is simply a request to continue to participate in that program.
Yeah.
In case, maybe, I don't know, how do you feel about consent?
I'm, I'm fine with consent. I assume we've been doing this for years as a county. I know lots of law enforcement agencies participate in this exact program. You know, I actually have personal questions about, about the program. That being said, I think it's just a continuation of status quo, and I think putting it on consent is okay with me.
Commissioner Thompson?
I'm comfortable with consent. There tends to be any cost allocation, so.
Very well. Then we will put that on for consent. I think that that, that does make sense. Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. That brings us to 2021-151.
Commissioners, 2021-151 is a request from prosecuting attorney to approve a monthly reimbursement program for all payroll costs to, for the addition of COVID backlog staffing to deal with some of the DACA requests having to do with things that took place in the last year. And there are folks here from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office to speak to this request.
Good morning again. Spencer Curtis from the Clay County Prosecutor's Office. So this is just, we provided the basis for our request last time we were here. This is just for two full-time attorney positions, base salary of $52,000 a year plus benefits, and then a staff member at $32,000 plus benefits. I think the total request is for $180,000. Pending any questions that you may have in that regard.
And that 180 is for the balance of this year?
It is.
Okay. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Carpenter?
Just that I, you know, support this initiative and look forward to supporting it.
I agree that this is, this is something we need to be doing with the expenditure of money, so I'm thinking of regular agenda.
Oh, I agree with that, yeah.
Very well. Is there anything, anyone from the public like to weigh in? Seeing none. Is there any further comments you'd like to make at this time?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate your time, though.
I'm sorry?
Appreciate your time.
Oh, thank you for being here and sharing the information. That brings us to 2021, Ordinance 22. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021, 2021, Ordinance 22 is an ordinance to reappropriate and revise the adopted budget for the current year for the county. And the auditor is here and prepared to speak.
Good morning, Commissioners. Victor Hurlberg, Clay County Auditor. So what we just heard with 2021-151, what 2021, Ordinance 22 essentially does is provide some mechanism to be able to do those reimbursements for our first example of an expenditure from the American Rescue Plan Act. As you know, previously, we already created the fund. I came to you for that, and we've been generating interest in the Treasurer's Office from that $24 million. This just enables the county to actually spend money by having a budget and expenditure lines. Just to give a little background as to how these numbers were derived, essentially, the approach was to look at eligible uses under the American Rescue Plan Act. And first, we took the maximum allowable revenue loss under the guidance and interim final rule. They have a specific equation that you can use for counterfactual revenue loss. What you do is essentially take what your 2020 revenue should have been, looking at the average annual growth from '17, '18, '19, and come to the difference between what your 2020 revenue actually was. And so our difference was $908,000. That can be used for general government services. There aren't any major restrictions on those dollars. The national average that Treasury allowed you to use was 4.1%. The greater of that, or what your trend was, and Clay County's was 5.6%, so that's what got us to the $908,000. You are allowed to recalculate that loss at the end of '21, end of '22, end of '23, because remember, these dollars go until the end of 2024. So we'll do that and see if that's available as we rebudget this fund in future years. So essentially, the methodology was take the $24 million total we got, subtract the revenue loss, and then split the remainder for eligible uses. Certainly, the commission can adjust this as we go forward with this large amount of money. It would just look like a transfer within a fund where we would move between accounts, create new accounts, I'll take your direction. But basically, I divided the remainder, those $23 million, by three categories, those being COVID response, which looks a lot like the CARES Act, except now it's more forward-looking from March 3rd on. Economic recovery is another eligible category, as well as infrastructure, which is limited to water, sewer, and broadband. It's not all things infrastructure. It's very specific to those. That is essentially it. I will mention that I did not include in here one major category of premium pay for central county workers. We had made a large step this year with law enforcement, with CARES Act dollars. So I had some concerns with that of doing it in this budget year. We can certainly consider that in future years if the commission so desires. But that one has some, a lot of nuance into how that's calculated, because it's up to 150% of median average pay in the county from the Department of Labor. It's up to $13 an hour and $25,000 total. So it's, it would take some, some calculation to get to, but we certainly can do it. So that's, that's essentially what this is. I'll make a comment as well that I think something we should consider now at this point is, if the commission wants to look at forming some sort of application... is if the commission wants to look at forming some sort of application procedure for both external and internal partners, as to how we make expenditures going forward from these buckets. You know, just for some background, with the CARES Act, it was a lot different in how we approached it. It was rather arbitrary, where we gave to cities based on population, school districts, and then counties based on their operating budget, the percentage of the operating budget. Well, this time, the cities and their community partners are getting their own funds from the state or from federal government directly, so there's that to consider. And then with the, you know, county portion, we didn't use all of our funds, and each budget, each county department had more budget than what they needed, from my estimation. So it might make sense to look more at an application process and what those eligible costs would be, but we can certainly, you know, look at how we want to approach that with internal county costs. So I just wanted to mention that. That's really all I have, and I'll answer any questions.
Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions or comments?
No, thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Carpenter?
Thank you again for the, thank you for the hard work on this. So when we divide the money into three pieces here, all the funds are still in 224, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And then it's just subdivided within 224?
Yep, yep.
Okay. And, you know, you mentioned that obviously we can still adjust those numbers going forward, so we're not locked into this, because, you know, it's not going to work out that we, you know, that it breaks out that way, right? So we're not losing any actual flexibility in terms of how we utilize these funds by doing it this way?
Not at all. If the commission has an infrastructure project that's for $10 million, we'll just do a transfer within funds and make that work. The reason I wanted to break it out this way is we are actually required by treasury guidance to make a report in how we spend by category by August 31st, I believe. I'll say that with the caveat, because I think it's for entities over 250,000 residents. In the 2019 census, we were just under, like, 50 people. So I think with 2020, we'll get over that, but, so this will just help us be ready to say, okay, we spent X amount on this use and so forth. But certainly, yeah, this is flexible, and it's hard for me to, and, you know, I don't, maybe I'm wrong, but it's hard for me to see us spending $24 million in six months, but I might be wrong.
No, I agree that that doesn't seem, that doesn't seem likely. So when you say that if we end up having to do the August report, I mean, so we wouldn't report at that time these $7.78 million figures, right, for each category, because I assume that there'll be one in expenditure.
There'll be one in expenditures. I mean, we could make mention that we appropriated in such manner, subject to future revision, but just our temporary plan. And I can bring that report to the commission before it's done, or, and work with Administrator Salisbury on how we want to do that as a county. But it's going to be more than just reporting the numbers, like with other compliance reporting, from what I understand, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
On the issue of the, putting it into these categories, it seems to me that what we're engaging in, and I appreciate that, and that is, we are, in a way, over-complying. We're anticipating that we will be required to make a report more in this form, and so we are kind of going above and beyond what our absolute requirements are from the Treasury Department. Is that a pretty fair thing to say?
I think so. Just looking at the CARES Act, we basically had, we had one account for everything we gave to outside entities, and then we had several for every single county department. And this acts a lot different, and we got reporting on how those funds were used with the CARES Act, but this one will be a little cleaner in that way, so, yeah, I'd agree.
Okay. Also, the guidelines, which I think you've been reviewing, one of the things that occurs to me is, looking at the rental program, is there are some slightly different regulations for the second wave of cash coming in from that. So clearly, what we're doing is what we have right now, that we have to be somewhat flexible. I appreciate you and your team basically making sure that we are able to adjust as the guidelines may well be shaded a little bit one way or the other as the program matures.
Certainly. It seems that what treasury can do is they'll issue updated guidance and FAQs regularly, but they won't take away from what's already been issued, right? They might adjust and add to that as far as, you know, more flexibility in that manner, but they won't really take away from what's already allowed, you know.
Okay. And this, of course, is the first half of the funding. The second half will be coming in next year.
Right.
And it will be very similar, if not an identical amount.
Certainly. And we'll have another opportunity at this when we get ready for the 2022 budget. We'll budget this fund, and we can look at how we want to do that.
And then finally, you had made mention of an application-type process, which I very much appreciate you mentioning. When we had the CARES Act funding, I think we did not go through it in as thoughtful a manner as far as how that would actually be divided up. I think that, like, this commission is going to be a lot more thoughtful about how we administer these monies and how we make sure that we are good stewards of the people's money, even if it is federal government money. Any other questions or comments? Are there any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none. What would the, Commissioner Thompson, do you favor consent or regular on this particular item?
I'm comfortable with consent or regular. I'm okay with consent.
I think I'd prefer regular, if that's all right with everybody.
Very well. I think so. I mean, we're not literally spending money, but this is an issue that is important enough to where it bears all the possible discussion we can. So 2021 ordinance 22 will go on regular for next meeting. That brings us to 2021-141, Mr. Administrator.
Commissioners, 2021-141, I'll say it again, 2021-141 is to approve an IFB number 3421, a term and supply contract for Double Check Company, Inc., for on-call petroleum parts, sales, service, and installation. This affects not only parks but highway and airport, and Highway is here to speak to that.
Please proceed.
Good morning, Commissioner. Carl Walters, Deputy Director of the Administrations, bringing to you 2021-141. This is a term and supply that we are getting for repairs to our fuel systems, parks, highway, and airport. We went with Double Check because Double Check's been known throughout our county repairs and things, and plus, they have our fuel system out at the highway department that we just had purchased a year and a half ago that's online for us to keep track of our fueling through, from the sheriffs to P&amp;Z and other entities within the county, plus the highway department. So it's nothing that we're spending right now. It's just an on-call, so if we do have a problem, that we can call them, and they can come and redo the repairs as needed.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any comments or questions that you'd like to make?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No, just thank you for the explanation.
Thank you.
And this is a renewal?
No.
No, this is a new, okay, this is a new one, I'm sorry. I was looking ahead, apologize. What is the, what are the thoughts of the commissioner's consent or regular agenda on this particular item?
I'm good with consent.
Very well. 2021-141 will be on the consent agenda for next week. That brings us to 2021-144, Mr. Administrator.
Commissioners, 2021-144 is to approve an application for federal and state assistance through the Missouri Department of Transportation to receive a grant. An airport is here to speak to that.
Please proceed.
Good morning, Commissioner. Carl Walters, Deputy Director of Administrations. This is a application to, this is brought to us by the Aviation Coronavirus Relief Funds from FAA to give us $23,000 through grant monies to help us with our maintenance, repairs, and salaries of things that we need out at the airport.
Commissioner Carpenter, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not, thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
I see that this is the second year we've been receiving this?
Yeah, this is the second round that we're receiving this, and we may be looking at a third round.
Wonderful. That's all I have, thank you.
All right. Is everybody okay with consent on this? Very well. 2021-144 will be on our consent agenda for next week. 2021 ordinance 23, Mr. Administrator.
Commissioners, 2021 ordinance 23 is to reappropriate and revise the adopted budget for the current year, again, for highway, and Highway is here to speak to that.
Please proceed.
Morning, Commissioner. Carl Walters, Clay County Highway Director. This is the, within the fund of 220, to increase our funds for our fuel, for Sheriff's Highway and other departments that are using out of our highway. These are within the funds of 402, 505, and the funds 457, 700, to move those dollars to 220, 701, 332. We were initially budgeted $100,000. We really are apt to usually doing $160,000 for what we do within the highway. Usually, when our program starts, the budget starts first of the year. We have our snow removal that we deal with, and then we have our patching of the roads that come in the springtime, our reclaiming that starts in the springtime to get prepped for our chip and seal program that we do within the year. We're down to, and then as you go into the fall season, then we're back into snow season again. When the sheriff is purchasing those fuels, as we said in the budget, that money doesn't come back, I mean, it does come back, but it comes back monthly, but it's not anything that reimburses us back tremendously. So as we're doing our projects, that's kind of cutting us short a little bit, so with moving those monies, we can take and add another $60,000 or $59,000 to our budget, maybe get us to the end of the year with these monies.
Okay. Any comments or questions from Commissioner Carpenter?
No.
Mr. Thompson?
No, thank you.
Is everybody good with ordinance 23 on consent?
I think I'd prefer regular, if that's all right with everybody.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. 2021 ordinance 23 will appear on our regular agenda next week. That brings us to 2021-143, Mr. Administrator.
Commissioners, 2021-143 is to approve a term and supply agreement with Kenton Brothers Incorporated for security system services throughout the county. Facilities is here to speak to that.
Please proceed.
Good morning. Donna Coontz, Deputy County Administrator. The Kenton Brothers is a vendor that has been competitively bid nationally. We could use this vendor, because it's already a pre-approved vendor, but we've asked to put this vendor under Clay County's purchasing specification, so we can expand the scope of what we can do with this vendor, because this vendor also has locks that we need for our detention facility, and they're hard to find. There's not a lot of vendors that sell those specific types of security locks. So we want to add this vendor into our ability to use them, so we can expand that duty to buy locks.
Very good, yes. And it sounds as though we are going to be needing their services, or at least services of this sort.
Yes.
Pretty quickly. Commissioner Carpenter, do you have any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
No, thank you.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none. Is there a, is there a thought as far as consent or regular agenda?
I'm fine with consent.
Commissioner Carpenter, you good with consent?
I am.
Then 2020, excuse me, I lost my place, 2021-143 will be, appear on our consent agenda for next meeting. That brings us to 2021-145.
Commissioners, 2021-145 is to approve a revocable event license for the Smithville High School Booster Club for their annual Lunardic Arctic 5K run at Smithville Lake, and Parks is here to speak additionally to that.
Please proceed.
Hi, Donna Coontz, Deputy County Administrator. There are numerous special events on the agenda today, because our park director, Mike Driscoll, has years of experience with some of these groups. I also have Mike Driscoll here. He can probably address any more specific questions than I can, since this is my first year with this particular groups. But this allows our Smithville High School girls to do, basically, an evening run, and that's why it's called Lunardic. It does ask to see if we can keep the parks open just a little bit later to do this run within the moonlight.
I'm glad to hear that, because I thought I'd heard Arctic, and I was a little confused by that at this time of year, but, okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions, Commissioner Thompson?
I know this is an annual event. Do you know how many years we've been doing this out at Smithville Lake?
That's a good question. I will see if I can find it real quick. Otherwise, maybe our park director can answer it.
I just, I remember it throughout the years, so I just, I just didn't know if we had a number and how many we've been doing it. That's fine.
Eight, eight years. Thank you, from the back row. Thank you.
Thank you for the visual. Do you have anything for the commissioner?
That is it, thank you.
Mr. Carpenter?
No, just, as a former cross-country runner myself, ran 5Ks all around Clay County, and let's do one up in Smithville. Sounds good to me.
We have a number of these, you're right, and I think this is something that certainly would work on our consent agenda without much doubt. Consent agenda?
Yeah, absolutely.
Very good. Thank you very much. 2021-145 will appear on next week's consent agenda. That brings us to 2021-146, Mr. Administrator.
Commissioners, 2021-146, another request to approve a revocable event license for the Kansas City Sports Commission to hold the WIN4KC women's triathlon and duathlon at Sailboat Cove at Smithville Lake, and Parks is here to speak to that.
Please proceed.
Hi, Donna Coontz, Deputy County Administrator. We have our park director here, but we also have a representative from WIN4KC, so I'm going to let them address any specific questions.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Josh Sobel, Director of Events with the KNC Sports Commission and WIN4KC. On behalf of the WIN4KC Women's Triathlon, which we are entering our 16th year up at Smithville Lake and Sailboat Cove for the triathlon, duathlon, and we've added a couple of new events this year with a supersprint and aquabike that will take place all at Sailboat Cove. So we're just here for approval for that event, which will be on Saturday, July 31st, with a start time of 7:30 a.m.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Commissioner Thompson?
No questions, but I'm glad to see you guys back again for the 16th year. That is wonderful, and there are people with more energy and time to do this, so I love seeing this going on at our lake, so thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No, just same sentiment, glad it's happening, and I assume last year it had to be canceled?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. Well, like Commissioner Thompson said, glad it's back and hope it's successful of it.
Well, thank you. We're very excited to be back, and obviously, like I said, last year was canceled, so we're looking forward to being back up there.
Thank you. We are looking forward to having a lot of these events, certainly yours is one of them, so it's good to be back into something resembling normal life again. Is consent agenda okay with everybody?
Yes.
2021-146 will appear on our consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
21-147, Mr. Administrator, please proceed.
Commissioners, another request for, to approve a revocable event license for the Wake the World KC event, which will be held at the Paradise Point Marina and Courtesy docks, and Parks is here to speak to that.
Please proceed.
Hi, Donna Coontz, Deputy County Administrator. This event, Commissioners, helps sponsor boys and girls clubs with water sport events held up at the parks. It has been an annual event for a while. Again, I don't know the number of years. You know the number of years?
I do not know exactly, but it's like 20 years.
Long-term, then, over 20.
Great. Are there any questions? Commissioner Carpenter or comments?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
No, thank you.
Okay, once again, this is something that appears absolutely appropriate for our consent agenda, if everybody's agreeable?
Yes.
So 2021-147 will appear on our consent agenda next week. That brings us to 2021-148, Mr. Administrator.
Commissioners, another request to approve a revocable event license for the Cowboy Up Events LLC, the annual Matt Mason Cowboy Up Triathlon at Smithville Lake, again, from Parks, which is here to speak to it.
Please proceed.
Hi, Donna Coontz, Deputy County Administrator. This one, I'm definitely going to refer to our parks director. I do know the Matt Mason Cowboy Up event has been held for many years. This is quite the event. There's a large turnout for this event. They have also additionally asked, and they're seeking all their proper permits, to do a parachute jump this year.
Any questions, Commissioner Carpenter, or comments? Any questions, Commissioner Carpenter, or comments?
Um, no, I don't, no, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
No, thank you.
I mean, I am interested in hearing more about the parachute jump, if I'm being honest, but I don't, you don't have to, you don't have to give more explanation. That sounds interesting, but.
Oh, I have a pair of hives, so I think I'll be watching that particular event from the ground safely, holding on to the grass. With that, I think once again, this is certainly appropriate for consent agenda, Commissioner Thompson?
I agree.
It might be worth mentioning Commissioners that Matt Mason is the Navy SEAL from Kearney who lost his life in Afghanistan, and who, so who is the designated beneficiary of this particular event, a worthy event.
Thank you, I appreciate you pointing that out. That's something, this is obviously an event that's, you know, been going on for some time, and it's sometimes getting caught up in the excitement and the interest of an event. It's easy to lose sight of the person who it is named for and their accomplishments and why we should be remembering them. With that, that will appear on consent. Everybody's good with that? So that would be one forty eight. That brings us to one forty, twenty twenty one, one forty nine, Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, twenty twenty one, one forty nine is another request to approve a revocable event license for the Society for Creative Anachronisms, the annual Lily's War event and fireworks display, and that will take place at the Kelsey Short Youth Camp. Parks is here to speak to that.
Please proceed.
Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator. The SCA is another group that's been with us many years. They are a reenactment group. Even when I was with the county in the past, it is quite the event to even drive down the road and witness over there. But again, they're asking to hold their annual event with us and have fireworks. Again, they are seeking all the proper permits to have the fireworks.
And their bailiwick, their era is kind of Renaissance-ish time.
Renaissance type, if they're, they're reenacting.
Yeah. I was pretty sure, yeah, I noticed Lily's War, is that kind of like War of the Roses, but in a little different take, it sounds like to me. It'd be interesting to check it out. Do you have any questions or comments, Commissioner Carpenter?
Uh, no, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
No, thank you.
Once again, obviously, this is something that is appropriate for our consent agenda, and I think that kind of takes care of our social calendar.
Actually, we have one more that's looped down behind the next event, so if you want to take them out of order, we do have one more special event.
Oh, yeah, we do. Now, we'll just go ahead and keep rolling through the way we are, I guess. That seems to make sense. That brings us to, so twenty twenty one, one forty nine will appear on our consent agenda. Twenty twenty one, one five oh, Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, twenty twenty one dash one five oh is to approve the sale or disposal of surplus auction items as stipulated in the code of ordinances. Facilities is in charge of that and is here to speak to that request.
Please proceed.
Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator. Our surplus has been an arduous task and a mess, to say the least. Surplus has not been moved for a couple of years. COVID shut everything down. In the past few years, there's been a lot of office changes, different things purchased, and that means the old stuff has to go someplace, and it has been literally shoved any place, any closet, any vacant room, any place it could go, to the point that we actually obtained a storage trailer to start filling it with stuff. So what we are asking is for the formal approval that we can finish dispersing of all of these items to a vendor that does online auctions called ConAg.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments, Commissioner Thompson?
I will say, I'm very glad to see that this is happening, because I know that there has been a big issue with our surplus over the past couple of years. So I will ask, have we opened it up to any of their offices? Have they had a chance to come down and kind of shop it and kind of repurpose and reuse?
As part of our thing of coming down here, we have been well in touch with all the offices. We have been inundated with requests, with people looking for things, so we have, we've kind of had a daily shopping in our backyard, so to speak, to look for things. And we're still looking for a couple of decent desks. We are disposing of some very, I'm calling it the Barney Miller era of steel desks that nobody seems to want in their office, but we would still like to find a couple of nice desks. We haven't found any yet.
Wonderful. Okay, well, that's all I had to say, and I will say, I always enjoyed coming down and digging through the surplus. It was like a treasure hunt, so.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No, just thinking, it sounds like a pretty obvious and important project, so thanks. It sounds like a lot of work, too, so good luck.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree. Thank you for putting this, this forward. I mean, it's not just a lot of work, but it takes up a lot of square footage. We as a county have, that we will need for other uses, so, yeah, clearing this out would be extremely helpful. Is everyone okay with consent on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Very well. Twenty twenty one, one five oh will appear on the consent agenda next week. That brings us to twenty twenty one, one fifty two. Please proceed.
Commissioners, twenty twenty one, one fifty two is to approve a request for the use of county grounds for, from the city, by the city of Liberty for the annual Make Music Day event. That's impacted by facilities, and Facilities is here to speak to that.
Please proceed.
Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator. Yes, this is a request from our neighbor to have stations of musical singing onboard on both the north and the south steps. They have provided their insurance and deposits, so we're in good standing with our neighbors, and we're good to go.
Sounds great. Question or comments, Commissioner Thompson?
I'm just glad that we are getting all these events coming back up again, and I'll have to send the four-year-old down with his recorder on this day.
There you go. Maybe they're looking for performers, you never know.
I know, maybe.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Uh, it sounds like a great event. Thank you.
Comments from the public seeing none? If there are no objections, then we'll put twenty twenty one, one fifty two on for consent?
Yes.
Very well. Brings us to twenty twenty one, one fifty three. Mr. Administrator, please proceed.
Commissioners, twenty twenty one, one fifty three, and last, is to approve another revocable event license for Midwest Adaptive Sports for their twenty-sixth annual Day at the Lake. This takes place at the Crowes Creek Handicap Dock and Shelter, and Parks is here to speak to that.
Please proceed.
Again, Commissioners, Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator. This benefits and gives a sports event day in the water for spinal cord injuries. There is a representative if they would like to speak.
Well, Commissioners, Bill Brooks, President of Midwest Adaptive Sports. Like everybody, we're glad to be able to get this event back, but it's termed Day at the Lake. It's an opportunity for adaptive water skiing for normally spinal cord injury individuals to be able to get out and take advantage of the lake and water ski and do some other activities, and fits into our adaptive water sports program. We also own and manage Northland Outdoor Ventures, which is a kayak business that operates at Smithville Lake as well, so it all ties in and, you know, continues to provide opportunities for athletic events for folks that have disabilities and they'll have that opportunity to get out as much as, as able-bodied folks.
Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Thompson?
No questions today, but this was another event that was canceled last year.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really glad we were able to get this up and going again, and it's all-inclusive, you know, getting everyone out in the water and letting them experience this. I think this is wonderful.
Yeah, yeah, we're definitely glad to be able to get out and, you know, get our other sports up and running, so it's been a little bit of a struggle, but it's glad to be getting back some sense of normalcy.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Well, just wanted to say, thanks for taking the time to come out and talk to us today and do the presentation. Sounds like a wonderful event, and so thanks for your work on that.
Yeah, you're very welcome. We'll have training on July 10th. The actual event's on July 16th at Crowes Creek. Be more than happy to have you guys come out and watch and, you know, see how everything goes along on that, so.
Sure, yeah, thank you.
I really appreciate the time.
Well, we certainly appreciate the fact that you're there. I mean, we made comment more than once on the fact that we're bringing back so many events. One that makes yours certainly, I wouldn't say unique so much as stands out, is that it is enabling people who would have some challenges in participating in these sports. So by, by extending that opportunity, I just want to say, I think, speaking for the commission, we are very happy to be able to help participate in, in making that, that happen for these, these folks.
Yeah, yeah, we really appreciate all the support. It really helps us out a lot.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the public on this issue? Seeing none. Twenty twenty one dash one fifty three seems appropriate for consent?
Yes.
Very well. With that, I will entertain a motion related to the agenda we just went through, I should say, the regular agenda.
I move that we put twenty twenty one, one three nine, twenty twenty one, one five one, twenty twenty one ordinance twenty two, twenty twenty one ordinance twenty three, twenty twenty one, one four three on the regular agenda and all remaining items on the consent agenda for next Wednesday, June 9th at sixteen.
Motion has been made to put twenty twenty one, one thirty nine, twenty twenty one, one fifty one, twenty twenty one ordinance twenty two, or twenty one, twenty ordinance twenty three, and twenty twenty one, forty three on for the regular agenda for next week. Remaining items on the regular agenda to be put on a consent agenda. Discussion, Commissioner Thompson?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter, you are free to close.
Thank you, I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes?
Thank you very much. That brings us to comments on non-agenda items. Are there any members of the public here who would care to comment on any non-agenda items, the items that we did not cover in today's meeting? Seeing none. Are there any office holders who would care to comment on any items not on today's agenda? Please proceed.
Kathy Ryan-Harley, Clay County Assessor. I would like to thank Donna Kuntz and her group for fixing the door up here. Every time you open it, it makes this god-awful sound, and you know it's coming, but yet it still terrifies you, and it didn't do that yesterday or today, and I'm like, oh my God, it's only taken five years. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I hardly agree. I've had the same experience yesterday when I came in, I used that door, and it was, I was braced for the noise, and it didn't, so yes, thank you. It's, it's a little like the pothole right outside your driveway. It's nothing more annoying than that particular thing. Please proceed.
Captain Amy Agderian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. So my non-agenda comment is to thank you for, and apologize for not being here when you addressed my agenda item for the Sheriff's Office. As I am still stepping away from previous administration ten o'clock meetings, which I was on time for, I was very late to present our, our information, so it's my understanding that went to consent?
I believe so.
Okay, I very much appreciate that. Thank you very much, and if appropriate, I am available to answer comments from the public or from the commission if you choose.
Thank you, we appreciate you making yourself available, and we realize that sometimes the meetings get shifted and it doesn't, doesn't always make it easy.
Okay.
Any other comments from any other elected, office holders on non-commission, on non-agenda items? Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry, please proceed.
Sandy Baldwin with the collector, or excuse me, the clerk of Clay County. I want to thank, we have been trying for six years to get a computer at the front desk to be able to assist our taxpayers and our, for our BOE appeal process. Finally, we received one. Thank the IT Department for coming up so quickly, putting it up, getting it all fixed up for us so we can move forward and be more helpful to the taxpayers today. And the best thing of all is we have done, our, the clerk's office has done ninety-four sunshine requests, and I want to give you a couple of numbers from twenty and nineteen from Spencer Fain, what he charged in two thousand and nineteen. A hundred and fifty-one thousand plus a few hundred dollars, and then in two thousand and twenty, it was three hundred and seventy-three plus dollars. And the ninety-four sunshine requests that we have done, there has been no cost to the county. We haven't been threatened sued. We haven't had any arguments with anybody that we've had, with the requesters. We've answered most, well, probably ninety-nine percent of them within one or one and a half days. So I think our, our staff has done a great job, and I just really do appreciate the environment that we have today. Thank you.
Would you mind sending some of those figures to us in the form of an email? I think that's something that we as commissioners, as we go forth in the community, would like to maybe make some notice of and have those figures.
I think those numbers are, are quite relevant.
It's entirely so.
And I, and I just wanted to say thank you to you in your office for doing those. I mean, that's over a half million dollars of, of, over the last couple of years on, and you all did it under the budget of your, of your office.
And we really did a good job when Ms. Thompson was there. We still did a good job in, with our, with our sunshine request at that time. Even then, we had no problems, but they chose to go, the previous commission chose to go a more expensive direction.
Any other office holder comments? Seeing none. Sorry about that, I wasn't looking in your direction. Are there any agency comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none. That brings us to county administrator comments. Mr. Administrator?
I have none, thank you.
That brings us to commissioner comments. Commissioner Thompson?
I don't have any today, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Just that I'm glad that the sunshine and the, and the summer has finally arrived today, so. And all these events that we have approved today have, have put me in a, in a good summer mindset, looking forward to it.
I just got two things I want to mention right quickly here. One is yesterday was the first meeting of the bicentennial commission, so they are off and running, so I'm happy to, to hear about that. Certainly, any input the commissioners want to forward to that body, please feel free to contact and reach out to them. Kind of along those lines, something that I would like to consider maybe discussing at a future time, and that is maybe having a meeting where we would be talking about our, the meeting schedules that we have for outside meetings. I think it might be helpful to, it's a bit, it's a bit difficult with a three-person commission to communicate what kind of meetings we're going to and, and that sort of thing, so it might be constructive to be able to have a meeting at some point that would be looking forward to the next period of time, whether it's a month, so that all commissioners kind of have an idea of, you know, a broader picture of what's going on. It's easy to get in our little rut, so I don't think it's, you know, I don't want to be discussing it today because it's not noticed up, but I think that's something that we might consider in the future, just to make it a little bit smoother process. That brings us to approval of the previous, minutes of previous sessions. We have one, which is a May 20, twenty twenty one, 10 a.m. meeting. Is there a motion related to those minutes?
Make the motion to approve the May 20, twenty twenty one at 10 a.m. session as printed.
Motion is made for the approval of the May 20, twenty twenty one, 10 a.m. meeting minutes discussion. Commissioner Carpenter?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson, you are free to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes?
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Brings us to written reports. Are there any written reports to be presented?
We have two. We have one from the auditor. It's a May monthly report, and it's on the auditor's cash basis. And the second one is a May report from revenue and fees from the clerk's office. And I would like to mention, which I didn't, the dollar amounts that I gave you from Spencer Fain was from January 1st to June the 1st of those two years.
Thank you, that's helpful to get that time context. Are there any further written reports to the commission? Seeing none. That brings to executive sessions. We have been noticed up for personnel. Missouri Statute 610.021 parentheses three. Is there a motion to go into executive session and to adjourn therefrom?
I move that we go into executive session and adjourn therefrom.
Motion is mid-made, excuse me, motion has been made to go into executive session under personnel and to adjourn therefrom. I just want to make mention of the fact that we have, as commissioners, been apprised of what that meeting will be, the subject matter of that meeting, and it's something different than we've been doing in the past, so I think that it's a good thing to keep commissioners informed, and for my part, I believe that those items that we were given notice on certainly qualify under personnel and certainly are applicable to Missouri sunshine law. sunshine law. With that, further discussion? Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Carpenter, you are free to close.
Thank you. I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes?
Thank you.